Henderson will be signing in shortly.
Just, just did.
Okay, good.
I believe the only one we're missing now is Peterson.
Okay, um, let's get the, you want to get the meeting going then?
Yep, 7:05, you got enough.
Okay. Hey, this is Chairman Oster speaking. I'd like to bring this meeting to order for the Town of Brunswick Planning Board for July 2nd, 2002, or 20, excuse me, oh boy. If everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
They know, oh, they're standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Chairman Oster speaking, I know that has a little bit of irony to it of standing up and everything, but I think we should at least do that if we don't have a flag. At this time, I'll have Pat, who's the moderator for our meetings, to give the review of the online etiquette.
Good evening, everybody. This is Pat Polito. Governor Andrew Cuomo's executive order has authorized us to hold our regular meetings over the internet. And to facilitate that, this runs smoothly with little technical issues as possible, are asking the following. When not speaking, please mute your audio. There's a lot of background noise, and if there's two of you, more of yous in the room, make sure only one of you's audio is on when you speak. Otherwise, there's a lot of repercussions to it. When speaking, please state your name. We do a transcript, and as you look on the website, we've been able to put a few of the meetings up, the transcripts on it. So please state your name when you start to speak. It sounds silly at first, but you'll get used to it. You are encouraged to use your headphones, in particular headphones with a microphone, so there's no feedback loop that'll be created. And if there's two or more watching in the meeting, as I said, same rule. Make sure that only one person has the audio on when speaking. Back to you, Chairman.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. At this time, I will have Chuck Golden from the Building Department do a roll call vote, or a roll call attendance vote.
Hi, this is Chuck Golden from the Building Department for the attendance. Member Henderson.
Member Henderson, present.
Member Krieger.
Member Krieger here.
Member Manello.
Member Manello, present.
How long are you gonna wait?
Member Chairman Oster.
Chairman Oster here.
Member Peterson. Member Peterson. Member Peterson absent. Member Stancliff.
Member Stancliff here.
Member Tarbox.
Member Tarbox here.
Thank you, members.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Chuck. Our meeting agenda tonight is Galivan, number one is Galivan Minor Subdivision, which involves a public hearing to start at 7:00 PM. Number two is Courier, which is special use permit, also a public hearing to commence at 7:15. And number three, Pharaoh, is a special use permit and site plan review. This is, will involve responses by the applicant to the public hearing at our last meeting. So with that being said, the first thing on our agenda is to review and approve the transcripts of several meetings that we've all received. We've received the transcript of the meeting on May 7th, June 4th, and June 18th. There is one missing, the May 21st is missing. It is, I believe in the mail as we speak, so we can approve, we can review and approve these three sets of minutes. And I would ask, Andy, do you want to do these as separate approvals, or can we do them all as, as one?
I think Attorney Gilchrist, for the record, it's better to address them one by one if anyone has any corrections or additions to each set of minutes, so if he can handle them separately, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Andy. Okay, we will take the first minutes or transcript of the minutes, which is for May 7th. Does anyone have any questions on that? Any comments, additions, corrections? Okay, Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none, I will make a motion to approve the minutes as they've been submitted, the transcript and minutes as they've been submitted. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. We'll take a roll call vote. Andy, would you please do a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, I will. Chairman, Attorney Gilchrist, Chairman Oster. Chairman Oster, on the motion to approve the May 7 minutes.
Okay, yay.
Okay, Member Krieger.
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello.
Member Manello, aye.
Member Peterson is absent. Member Henderson?
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Stancliff?
Member Stancliff, aye.
And Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
Motion carries.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Moving on to the transcript and minutes of June 4th. Are there any corrections, additions, or any amendments to those? Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve the transcript and minutes for May 4th as they've been submitted. Have a second?
Member Stancliff, second.
Chairman Oster, thank you. Attorney Gilchrist, will you do a roll call vote on that, please?
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist, and we'll clarify the record, these are the June 4th meetings, a transcript of the meeting held June 4th. Chairman Oster?
Yes.
Member Krieger?
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello?
Member Manello, aye.
Member Peterson absent. Member Henderson?
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Stancliff?
Member Stancliff, aye.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
The motion carries.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Now moving on to the minutes and transcript of the Planning Board for June 18th. Do I have any corrections, additions, or amendments to those minutes?
I had one, two, two comments on those minutes on page 16 at the bottom of the page. The last word of Chuck Golden's comment. I believe the word "train" should be changed to "terrain," T-E-R-R-A-N-E. And then I had a question for Attorney Gilchrist on the page 20. There were several inaudible sentences by the attorney, Ron, or the engineer, Ron LaBerge. And I wasn't sure whether we need his corrections on that, or they stand.
Right, Attorney Gilchrist here, I, I, it's my opinion that we shouldn't supplement. We have to go off the audio of the meeting, and unfortunately, those portions were not audible, so I believe the transcript as written is correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Those are my only comments. With those corrections, I offer a motion to approve the meeting minutes from June, the transcript from June 18th, 2020.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. So we have a motion to approve the minutes with the corrections so indicated. Attorney Gilchrist, will you do a roll call vote, please?
Attorney Gilchrist, yes, just for the record, to confirm someone to second the motion?
Member Henderson, I'll second.
Thank you. Roll call vote, Chairman Oster?
Oops, aye.
Member Krieger?
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello?
Member Manello, aye.
Member Peterson absent. Member Henderson?
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Stancliff?
Member Stancliff, aye.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
The motion is carried.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you. Moving on to our first item agenda. It is a public hearing for the Galivan Project. And at this time, I will read the
Excuse me, this is Member Stancliff. I'm recusing myself on this project.
Chairman Oster, thank you. Duly noted. The procedure for the planning of the public hearing is as follows, I'll just review it very quickly. The purpose of the public hearing is to hear concerns and comments and views from the general public regarding a particular proposal or application. All public hearings, in this case, are electronically recorded and a transcript is generated. In most cases, this written transcript is included with the minutes of the Planning Board Regular Meeting, which is conducted immediately after the public hearing. The applicant will be required to respond to all concerns and comments when the public made at the public hearing, and subsequently, the Planning Board will consider all concerns and comments when evaluating the application to ensure that the applicant has addressed all the issues in question. The public hearing will be conducted as follows. The notice of public hearing will be read by the Planning Board Attorney. Next, the applicant will give a brief presentation on the proposal and will provide any updates on the application. Upon completion of the applicant's remarks, the Chairman of the Planning Board will recognize persons from the public, and these individuals will be allowed to speak and offer their concerns, comments, and views. Since there is a transcript being generated, when you come online to make your comments, please give your name and address for the record, and then make your comments, please. At this point, I would like to have Andy Gilchrist read the notice of public hearing.
I thank you, Attorney Gilchrist. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board of the Town of Brunswick at 7:00 PM on Thursday, July 2, 2020, to review the application for minor subdivision submitted by Sean Galivan for property located along the northerly and easterly side of Deep Kill Road. Applicant seeks approval of a minor subdivision to create three new lots at this location with lot lines adjusted on two existing lots. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders 202.1 and 202.15, the Town of Brunswick will hold the July 2, 2020 Planning Board Meeting over the internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the July 2 Remote Planning Board Meeting, as well as copies of the minor subdivision application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the Troy Record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and it was mailed to owners of all properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. At this time, I believe it would be Brian Holbryter, representing the applicant, will give a presentation, brief presentation and any updates.
Brian Holbryter here, Land Surveyor. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, Brian.
I had to switch devices because the audio wasn't coming through. It was all broken up on my laptop, so I had to switch to my wife's iPad. So tonight, I am Suzie's iPad. So anyway, the project here on Deep Kill, we're proposing to put in three new building lots. I believe we've talked about that, and there was some questions regarding Army Corps wetlands that are on the parcel across the street. Just to give you an update, we had those delineated, and I have added the wetlands to the mapping. It was, the wetland boundary was a little closer to Deep Kill Road than the federal inventory mapping had shown, which kind of makes sense, I guess these things grow. And therefore, the wetland buffer does come across Deep Kill Road, and I'm, I will be supplying updated mapping that shows that. Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering was doing soil testing this week for the septic systems, and I hope to have plans from him in the next week or so to be able to submit for review by the town engineer. That's pretty much the update from what we've talked about last time. Be ready to answer any questions.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Brian. At this time, I will open up the microphones to anyone who wishes to make any comments in the public. Chairman Oster speaking. Pat, is there anyone that has logged on that may be a, someone who wishes to make any comments or a general?
This is Pat Polito, not that I can tell at this point.
Okay. I'll just make another general announcement. Is there anyone who wishes to make any comments? This is Chairman Oster speaking. Is there anyone who wishes to make any comments, express any concerns, or ask any questions regarding this particular subdivision? This is a public hearing, and the public hearing will be closed if I hear no comments.
Chairman, Chairman, this is Bill Goodell from Deep Kill Road. Can you, can you hear me at all?
Yes, Phil, go ahead.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that you could hear me. Hey, I'm just, I'm just, I don't really have any comments. We're talking about Galivan Subdivision here?
Chairman Oster speaking, yes, you're correct.
Okay, okay. Just really, really representing my mom and dad, who live right across the street. And I couldn't answer a couple of questions for my mother when she asked me. She was just curious, it was just a general question about the layout of the lots. Yeah, how does somebody take a look at how the lots are going to be laid out? How the driveways are going to be laid out? And where the septic systems are going to be? Well, I couldn't really find that information.
Chairman Oster speaking. I believe all that information has been downloaded on the town website under the minutes category, and you'll see a 2020 Planning Board file. And if you click on that, you should be able to access all the documents that relate to the Galivan Project.
Okay, okay, thank you. We just couldn't, we couldn't really find anything, and I had no answers from my parents, so that's why I was asking.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Are you online on the Zoom platform right now?
No, no, just on the phone.
Okay. Then I
I'm on the travel status here, so I'm on the phone.
Okay, then I would, you know, if you're, if you're interested in that type of information, it is provided for under the minutes category in the town website.
Okay. In general, it's three lots with, is the driveway for the back lot going up along the creek to the pond?
This is Chairman Oster speaking, I'm going to have Brian answer some of these questions.
Brian Holbryter here, Land Surveyor. Yes, the driveway to the third lot, the back lot, does go along a 50-foot right of way, which goes up in along next to the crack.
Okay, just curious as far as you know, the lot layout, where the driveways were. Okay, we'll, we'll take a look at that, Chairman.
Okay. Chairman Oster speaking, yes, do that, I mean, I'm sure if there's some confusion on it, that Brian would be able to help you out.
Okay, yep, thank you, I just wanted to ask that, because I, I couldn't answer the question myself when, you know, it was just a general question from my mom and dad, and I just couldn't find the information, so thank you very much.
Chairman Oster speaking, you're welcome. You know, it's understandable, sometimes this information is a little bit difficult to track down. So do you have any other questions?
Not at this time, sir.
This is Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Is there anyone else that has logged on that wishes to make any comments, or have any concerns or questions? Okay, Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none, I am going to close the public hearing. And we're going to move on to the second public hearing. Chairman Oster speaking, Andy, will you read the notice of public hearing, please?
Attorney Gilchrist, yes. And I just want to confirm on the record that Member Stancliff will be participating in this application for Courier, is that correct? Attorney Gilchrist, still, I'll inquire one more time. Member Stancliff, you will be participating in the Courier Special Use Permit Application Review, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Moving to the public hearing. Notice of public hearing, notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held by the Planning Board of the Town of Brunswick at 7:15 PM on Thursday, July 2, 2020, to review the application for special use permit submitted by Lynn Courier for property located at 9 Bleakley Avenue. Applicant seeks approval to construct a two-car garage and carriage house for use as an accessory apartment on property at this location. Pursuant to the Governor's Executive Orders 202.1 and 202.15, the Town of Brunswick will hold the July 2, 2020 Planning Board Meeting over the internet, accessible to the general public through the Zoom video conferencing platform. Direction on participating in the July 2 Remote Planning Board Meeting, as well as copies of the Special Use Permit Application for public inspection, will be available on the Town of Brunswick website. All interested persons will be heard at the public hearing. This was published in the Troy Record, placed on the town signboard, posted on the town website, and mailed to owners of properties located within 300 feet of the project site.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Andy. At this time, I'll have the applicant can just give a quick review and any updates on this application. Is Lynn Courier on board here?
Yes, sir, this is Lynn Courier at 9 Bleakley Avenue.
Chairman Oster speaking, could you just, for the benefit of the public, just review this quickly for us?
Sure. About four and a half years ago, I bought this property at 9 Bleakley. About a year ago, we decided that we wanted to, correction, build a garage with a carriage house, and we have a family member that will be residing in that carriage house. Pending any questions.
Chairman Oster speaking, just for the record, you had to get some variances on some setbacks on this, is that correct?
That is correct. This is Lynn Courier, that's correct.
Chairman Oster speaking, and they've already gone through zoning, is that correct?
This is Lynn Courier, and that is correct.
And Chairman Oster, Attorney Gilchrist here, I'll confirm on the record, as Ms. Courier is aware, I represent the Zoning Board of Appeals and can confirm that the required area variances were granted by the Zoning Board for this proposal.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open up the platform for anyone to make any comments in the public. Anyone who wishes to speak, have any concerns, comments, or questions for the applicant? Chairman Oster speaking, Pat, is there anyone that potentially has logged on that could be a speaker on, in regards to this public hearing?
This is Pat Polito. From the names I see, no. There's a couple phones, but one was Bill Goodell, and I'm not sure who the other phone is, so. As far as I can tell, no.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. One more time, is there anyone who wishes to make any, from the public, who wishes to make any comments? Have any concerns? Have any questions for the applicant? This is the public hearing portion. Once the public hearing is closed, there will be no further questions received. Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none, I will close the public hearing for the Courier Special Use Permit. Okay, at this time, we will, this is Chairman Oster speaking, we will start our regular agenda, the two public hearings have concluded. And first on our agenda is the Galivan Minor Subdivision. And I will turn the platform over to Brian.
Member Stancliff will be recusing.
Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. As I had stated in the public hearing, we continue to progress working on this project. We had North Country Ecological out there this week and delineated the New York State BEC Wetland. I have that added to the mapping. Unfortunately, that wasn't able to be done till today, so for the next meeting, you will have an updated mapping showing the newly delineated wetlands and the 100-foot buffer for that wetland, as well as I hope to have more engineering drawings, maybe some erosion and sediment control and, and whatever SWIP documents are needed to kind of complete this package, and Nick Costa from Advanced Engineering was out there this week with the Rensselaer County Health Department doing soil testings. I'm not sure how they made out with that yet, but I'll be able to report on that at the next meeting. So that's kind of the update for this project at this point. Thank you.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Brian. I believe at this time, we're probably going to have to wait for all that material to be completed, so there will be no action taken on this tonight. Um, we can reschedule you for our next meeting, which is on the 16th, I believe. Uh, and hopefully, we'll be able to move forward on that. Does anybody from the board have any additional questions for Brian at this time? Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none. I, I guess we're, uh, finished with the Gallivan project for this evening. Um.
Chairman Oster, yeah, Chairman Oster, Attorney Gilchrist, we'll just note for the record that the public hearing was closed on the minor subdivision, and the planning board now under state law has 62 days in which to render a decision, so, uh, Brian, as soon as you can get that information into the board for further review, uh, we'll certainly be within that 62-day timeframe for decision-making. That can be extended if necessary upon consent of the applicant, uh, but we'll hold on that until the additional information submitted by Mr. Holbryter.
Brian Holbryter, land surveyor here. Is there any way that this could be looked at for approval pending our Rensselaer County Health Department approval?
This is Chairman Oster speaking, uh. I'm going to ask Andy to possibly comment on that.
Attorney Gilchrist, um, and I'm going to also ask, uh, the planning board review engineer Wayne Bonesteal to weigh in. It would certainly be my advice to have that information in front of the board because it goes beyond, uh, the issue of just the Rensselaer County Health Department approval. Probably appropriate to have the updated map showing the wetland and the wetland buffer in front of the board, as well as any additional erosion and sediment control information or stormwater compliance for Mr. Bonesteal's review. Wayne, do you see any further issues?
Uh, Wayne Bonesteal, planning board engineer. Uh, those were the main issues that we brought up before, that Brian is working on addressing now. Um, the rest of the map looks good. He shows all the required information for minor subdivisions. Uh, I don't have any issues with anything else. I think I need to see the wetland mapping and at least schematically, the location of the, uh, septic, uh, leach fields and the wells. Uh, uh, of course, the health department does the final approval on those. Um, but it is important to get that information and see how it interacts with the wetland delineation to, to review and, and make a determination. Um, we have made that a condition of approval before on health department approval. Uh, however, there should be enough information for us to adequately, uh, review, um, the subdivision plot.
Brian Holbryter here, land surveyor. Um, understandable, and we'll try to have all that to you, uh, in time for you to be able to review it, Wayne, prior to the July 16th meeting. Thank you.
Chairman Oster speaking, uh, just as a note, uh, Brian, if you think there's going to be a, uh, a problem with making the meeting for the 16th, uh, please let us know, and we will put you on for the following meeting, which I believe is August. I don't have a calendar in front of me. I mean, I gotta apologize.
This is Chuck from the building department, August 6th.
August 6th, okay, there's actually a, uh, there's actually a three-week, uh, period between, uh, the 16th and August 6th, so, uh, it would probably be in your best interest if you could get all that information to, to Wayne before, uh, at least a week before, hopefully before, uh, our next meeting. But we will have you on the agenda for the 16th.
Brian Holbryter, land surveyor here. Uh, understood, and thank you very much.
Okay, Chairman Oster speaking, and next on our agenda is the, uh, Courier Special Use Permit. Uh, we just completed, uh, for, for the record, we did complete the public hearing. There were no comments, uh, made at the public hearing. Uh, therefore, there is no need for any response from the applicant on anything. So, at this point, uh, I would, uh, just ask, uh, uh, Lynn Courier to just review it again one more time for the record, and, uh, hopefully, we can proceed ahead.
Sir, this is, uh, Lynn Courier. Um, again, purchased a home about four and a half years ago. There was no garage on the property. Uh, a year ago, decided we wanted to, my twin sister and I decided we wanted to build a garage with a carriage house over it. Pending any of your questions.
This is Chairman Oster speaking, uh. Is there any questions from, uh, the board members at this point? This is Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none, uh. We can proceed ahead, uh, with a an approval on this. Just for the record, there were, um, setback variances that had to be, uh, obtained. They were, uh, through the zoning board as previously stated at the public hearing. Um, I'm going to ask Andy to, uh, review our seeker determination at this point.
Attorney Gilchrist, uh, first order of business for the board to consider is a determination under the State Environmental Quality Review Act. Again, to briefly review that, if upon your review of the application materials, including environmental assessment form, you determine that there is the potential for at least one significant environmental impact, uh, you will adopt a positive declaration and require further environmental analysis in the form of an environmental impact statement. Uh, alternatively, based upon your review of the application materials and environmental assessment form, the board concludes that there is not the potential for any significant adverse environmental impact from this action. Then you will adopt a negative declaration, and that will conclude the environmental review under seeker.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Uh, before we entertain a motion for a seeker determination, I would like to refer to, uh, Engineer Bonesteal, just if he has any comments or any concerns or any questions.
Engineer Bonesteal here, um. I, I don't have any additional questions or comments. I believe that, um, if, if anything comes up during the building permit review and Chuck needs an opinion, I'm happy to give it. Otherwise, I have no comment.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Wayne. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a, a seeker, uh, determination. Would anybody like to make that motion, please?
Yeah, this is member Henderson. I'd like to make a motion for a negative seeker determination.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Do I have a second?
Member.
Member.
Second.
I believe, Chairman Oster speaking, I believe that was, uh, Linda that, uh, made the second, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this? Chairman Oster speaking, I will now ask, uh, Attorney Gilchrist to do a roll call vote on that, please.
There we go. Attorney Gilchrist, and to clarify on the record, the motion was to adopt a seeker negative declaration made by member Henderson, seconded by member Stan Cliff. Roll call vote, Chairman Oster.
Sorry, Chairman Oster, uh, yay.
Uh, member Krieger?
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello?
Manello, aye.
Member Peterson, absent. Member Henderson?
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Stan Cliff?
Member Stan Cliff, aye.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
Now, the motion carries in a seeker negative declaration adopted, and we'll also clarify for the record that on this application, member Stan Cliff obviously has participated and is no longer recused.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Uh, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the, uh, waiver of subdivision.
This is member Tarbox. I'd like to, uh, go ahead with the motion to approve the, the, uh, project.
Chairman Oster speaking, do I have a second?
Member Manello, I'll second.
Do we have a second? Is there, this is Chairman Oster speaking, is there any further discussion on this?
Member Manello, I'll second.
Okay, Attorney Gilchrist here, just to confirm, um, you know, I'll ask this of Mr. Golden. Uh, i- is this public water, uh, public sewer? Is it private water, private septic? I just can't recall.
Ms. Courier will correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it is public water and private sewer. Lynn?
This is Lynn Courier. I need to make a correction. Uh, no, it's our own water, and our own, our own well water, and our own sewer.
Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you.
And so, Attorney Gilchrist here, I would suggest a condition to the approval being on Rensselaer, any Rensselaer County Health Department approvals for, required for the carriage home.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. Uh, do you want to, uh, uh, have us remotion that now with, uh, the new motion, Andy?
I think the record's clear. The motion, at this point, has been made to approve the special use permit with the added condition of Rensselaer County Health Department approval for, uh, water and septic for the carriage house. And the motion has been seconded by member Manello.
This is Engineer Bonesteal. Can we go back to seeker then? We need to amend the form. For items 10 and 11, they say, will the proposed action connect to an existing public private water supply? It's checked as yes, it should be no. Item 11, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? It says yes, the answer should be no.
Attorney Gilchrist, I, I just want to, uh, I guess, clarify and confirm the record, both with Mr. Golden and Ms. Courier. I- is there going to be a new well drilled, uh, for the carriage house and a new septic? Or is this going to be hooked into any existing systems?
Uh, this is Lynn Courier. Go ahead, Chuck.
This is Chuck from the building department. The well was, uh, going to be tested for five gallons per minute, and if that was allowed, it would be, uh, into the second structure. The, um, septic system did have the area for expansion to include the extra bedroom on the carriage house.
Attorney Gilchrist here, so, um, Mr. Bonesteal, do you think it's an appropriate response in the environmental assessment form to indicate that this action would be connecting into existing private water and existing private septic? And that the condition of the approval would be any necessary Rensselaer County Health Department approvals for that proposal?
Engineer Bonesteal, I would agree with that assertion.
Uh, Attorney Gilchrist here, given that, um, I think the motion then properly stands to approve the special use permit subject to any required Rensselaer County Health Department approval for the water and, and septic connection. Um, and that motion was seconded by member Manello.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you, uh. Is there any further discussion on this? Your Chairman Oster speaking, then I will have, uh, Attorney Gilchrist, one, please.
Yes. Attorney Gilchrist, on the motion, Chairman Oster?
Aye.
Member Krieger?
Chairman Oster, aye.
Member.
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello?
Member Manello, aye.
Member Peterson, absent. Member Henderson? Member Henderson? Moving on, member Stan Cliff?
Member Stan Cliff, aye.
Member Tarbox?
Member Tarbox, aye.
The motion is approved.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you, Andy, uh. Uh, Lynn, your, your project is approved. Good luck, and, uh, if you have any questions on, uh, you've obviously been talking to Chuck Golden in the building department. Uh, he'll be more than happy to help you out.
Woo, thank you so much, everybody.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, thank you, and, uh, good night. Okay, next on our agenda is the, uh, Farrow Special Use Permit and Site Plan. And, uh, at this time, I'm going to turn, uh, the floor over to, uh, Brian Holbryter, who I believe, I don't believe that, uh, which Pharaoh is on, online, is that correct, Brian?
Uh, no, I don't believe he is.
Uh, could you, uh, this is Chairman Oster, Brian, could you, uh, uh, we're at a point where you're probably going to have to review the responses to the public hearing. So, if there's any updates on the project right now, give them first, and then we'll go into the responses on the public hearing.
Attorney Gilchrist here, not to interrupt, but Brian, before you do that, I would like to note, for the record, that while the, uh, public hearing was closed at the last planning board meeting, the board did allow a one-week timeframe for the submission of additional written comments. A total of five submissions were received by the town. These include a letter from James A. Caruso, attorney and counselor at law, dated June 22nd. A letter from Martha Colangelo, dated June 19th. A letter from Gennaro and Kim Daniels, dated June 21. A letter from Peter Snyder, uh, undated handwritten. And a letter from Judith C. Van Hawken, dated June 21. And the town is in receipt of the response from the applicant to the public comments. Um, Farrell Homes Corp, executed by Charles Farrell applicant, and that was dated June 29. Thank you, Brian.
Okay, so, Brian Holbryter, land surveyor here, representing, uh, Charles Farrell on this project. Uh, just a quick recap, um, this project proposes two duplex units on what was lot 1B and 1C. Um, they're .9 acres and 8 acres in size. We had approval for four-bedroom, single-family residences on both of these lots, and we are going to put in two-bedroom duplexes, so a total of four bedrooms on each lot. The septic system sizes will remain the same. Um, we're accommodating for four vehicles in the proposed parking lots. Um, we have permits from the state of New York for driveway permits. Um, I think that's about it. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Brian. Uh, you did, uh, we did receive uh, the responses. And, uh, I would like to go through those, uh. Could you, uh, just review those with everybody? Uh, you can paraphrase if you'd like, but I believe everybody did receive this through the, uh, building department on an email. Uh, is there anyone on the board that did not receive uh, these, this response letter? Chairman Oster, uh, Chairman Oster speaking, uh, with that, uh, I'll have Brian, uh, just quickly go through your responses on here, if you would, please.
Okay, Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. Just to kind of quickly go through and kind of shorten this a little bit. As long as everyone does have a written copy. There was a lot of concerns regarding the character of the community. We noted that this quarter, New York State Route 2 has several different styles and architectural designs. The buildings being built are 1,760 square feet in size, that's not overly large building for a what is ultimately a same size as a four-bedroom home. The buildings are going to be one-story wood frame construction with a full cellar, the cellar would provide storage for each of the units. There was concerns regarding the storage as far as people, I guess, having stuff all over outside. They will have storage areas. And we feel the buildings are, the buildings on Route 2 are not going to be that far aesthetically different in appearance from, from what's already there. Single-family wood frame, nice entry door, several windows in the front. Then we spoke a little bit about nationally how more, there are more people wanting to rent homes. Talked a little bit about the rents that will be charged for these units, won't allow what the applicant, or the, not the applicants, but the concerned citizens called transient renters, we won't have transient renters. The rents that'll be charged will, will warrant having good tenants and talked a little bit about millennials and their desire to want to rent and not buy single-family homes. Talked about baby boomers looking to downsize and to rent especially single-family, or not single-family, looking to rent smaller apartments and sell their single-family homes. People, concerned residents, were talking about us inaccurately describing the areas densely populated. There seems to be about 90 homes within a half a mile radius of this site. That's quite a few homes in relation to the overall character of Brunswick. This is an R-15 zone. It seems as though the town of Brunswick is encouraging development of this area. And we think that these units would fit in nicely there. There's four dwelling units proposed on 74,000 square feet. We can have a dwelling unit per 15,000 square feet, we average 18,500 square feet. Gone through extensive efforts to make sure that these sites are properly engineered and to be compliant with all of the existing town codes and the Rensselaer County Health Department design standards. Regarding the wells and its effect on neighboring well yield, of course, we have no way to accurately predict any proposed impacts. Nor do we have the ability to know with any certainty if the failure of a neighboring well was caused by an installation of one of our wells, or if it was eminently going to fail. Town Brunswick has public water close in this area. We provided an easement for the expansion of that water line. Hopefully, maybe all of these residents will soon have public water. We have checked with Rensselaer County Health Department and provided documentation that says what we will need for water flow requirements to handle each of these duplex units and are going to comply with that. There was concerns raised about traffic. According to New York State DOT, the daily count on this highway is 3,250 plus or minus cars per day between the Little Hamlet of Eagle Mills and South Lake Avenue. We're proposing eight additional vehicles total here. And four of those vehicles out of the eight were already approved as part of two single-family units being approved, so we're only adding an additional four vehicles, eight vehicles total. There was a question brought up about the parking area on Lot 1C being within the easement area. This will not be an issue. If at some point the town of Brunswick wishes to exercise their right and expand the water lines down through that parking area, we will just have to merely find a different parking spot temporarily while the water line is run through, and then the parking area can be reestablished. And we understand that that's a risk that we run in this proposal. There was concerns about an absentee landlord, and they're being cluttered, stored outside, again, we talked, I talked briefly about the cellar area for storage. There's plenty of room there, if someone wanted to put a small shed, put some of their items in, there's room enough on these lots that they could put a small shed to keep the grounds looking good. The applicant and landlord is not absentee, and he will be keeping a good job of keeping these places looking nice. That's the only way to ensure, to get the rents that he's going to be looking to get. There was some talk about the picture of the proposed ranch house not matching the floor plan. Well, we just took something offline that kind of looked similar. We didn't have an exact picture of this unit because this floor plan has been designed by Mr. Farrell, and so there is no exact existing picture of the front, but it's going to look very, very similar to that with the slight difference of maybe it being a different porch size. I don't see that being a huge problem. You know, several of the citizens in the public hearing last week talked about how nice the houses turned out up on Pine Woods. And I don't think anyone has any reason to believe that these units won't look just as nice if given approval to, to move on and complete this project. And that's about it, is for the responses. Thank you for the opportunity.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. I'd like to open up the floor for some questions from the board. Before I do that, I, I have a couple of questions just to start the dialogue going. I realize now, after reading the response, that these units are going to be basically look like ranch houses with one front door with a foyer that will open up to two doors for one on each side for each unit. So I'm a little bit more less concerned about what these are going to look like as far as having two doors, two porches, connected building, so I was glad to see that was cleared up. As far as the long-term rental, I agree with him, but who's to say that Mr. Farrell will not sell these two weeks after they're, they're built? So the idea of having a out-of-town landlord is still a possibility. However, the neighbor could have a house sold next door to him down the street, and that could be bought by an out-of-town resident, or an out-of-town person, and they would be renting it to say an RPI professor. So the absentee landlord thing is kind of a scary definition. I did notice, and I had some concerns about this, whether I want to vote yes or no on this. And I just want to point out that down the street where the Brunswick Acres project would you all recall, we had some dialogue regarding the requirements that potentially were suggested we go up through there.
Attorney, Attorney Gilchrist here, I don't want to interrupt, Brian, I wonder if you could mute your mic because there's a lot of background from the plans that you're shuffling around and we can't hear Chairman Oster, thank you. Chairman Oster, if you could repeat that point?
Yes, this is Chairman Oster, thank you. I was just trying to relate to certain things that had happened in the past along this route to quarter involving apartments and so forth and so on. And if you recall, the original Brunswick Acres project, they initially came to us with a presentation that they wanted to put apartments up through there. And we basically decided that no, that was not an acceptable thing because based on the nature of the, the area and so forth and so on, and that the apartment business, so to speak, was more or less pushed over towards the Route 7, which had the public utilities to accommodate apartment complexes and so forth and so on. So we do have a history of, of, of looking at apartments along Route 2 as it relates to the comprehensive plan. The other thing was is several occasions, the planning board has communicated with the town board of our concerns about the number of apartments that were in the town and are proposed that was getting to a critical area of apartments to single-family house ratio that concerned us and that the town should look at this more closely. So those two things kind of like said, well, here we are allowing apartments to be basically put up in an area that we have tried to not inundate with any type of apartments or duplexes and things like that. We do have a little bit of a history in that respect. There are a lot of other things that concern me. The comments on the water. There was public water down through there at one time, and it was taken out. So if you recall, there was a line that came down to the farm buildings that was taken out. I do have a couple of questions for Brian, though. So, so, well, just to finish my comment on the water, so there is a potential, obviously, of bringing water down through there if it's an issue. I think the more bigger issue is the commercial operation in back of this. And nowhere in the public hearings was anybody bringing up, mentioning to that. You know, as far as, you know, in compliance with the zoning and so forth and so on, and, and everything like that. So I, I question that. And if anything had an effect on the water, I think along there, it would be that operation. I don't know what they're doing up there. I know they're storing mulpions and so forth and so on, and they have equipment up there. I'm not saying that there's any contamination to the groundwater, but there's certainly the potential. So the groundwater comments and the well comments I think can be corrected. There was a couple other questions I had. If these are going to be owned by Chuck and he wants to get this high you know, rent for these, to maintain one, you know, at least one-year leases with these, is there any provisions for a landscaping plan or any, anything like that on either of these units, Brian?
Brian Holbryter here. We don't have a actual landscaping plan, but I can guarantee you they're going to be landscaped nice. There'll be some bushes planted, you know, small bushes planted in front of each of the buildings. Typical to a residential house. And the rest of it will be mowed nicely, nicely mowed grass. It'll look a lot like a single-family house. Thank you.
Okay, Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Brian. The only other thing I'm going to make a comment is, and I'm still trying to figure this out. According to Article 8 in the special use permits section of the, the new zoning law, there's several criterias that are required or designed to do, and that is to protect the community from inappropriate design and other matters of scenic and aesthetic significance. And then to ensure that the proposed use will be in harmony with appropriate and orderly development of the district in which it is proposed. This, this is, this is a gray area for me with, with these type of units. Is this going to open up a slew of these type of units being proposed through, for example, R-15 lots in the area? You know, I, I'm trying to figure out whether we're, we're setting an example here that that may come back to bite us, so to speak. And so I'm torn whether I want to approve this or not based on this and the comprehensive plan of what this neighborhood of single-family homes was supposed to you know, provide for, so that's just an observation on my part, Brian. But I will now open up the floor to any other comments or questions that the board may have.
This is member Henderson. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
My concern is that this has always been a very residential neighborhood and I'm just not convinced that this is the place to put, I mean, they're called duplexes, but basically they're apartments, and I'm not I'm not comfortable with the idea of having apartments in that area. I, I just
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Don. Is there anyone else who wants to make any comments or have any questions?
Yeah, this is member Manello, I have a few comments myself. Brian, you had mentioned that, you know, this area is 7,400 square feet, correct?
That is correct, Kevin.
So that, that gives you the ability for an R-15 to have four individual homes, correct?
That is correct.
Now, is that, is that property conducive to have four independent homes?
I, I don't believe so, four independent homes would have to have, be only two or maybe three-bedroom homes each to meet all the necessary, I don't think we could meet all the necessary separations, Kevin, with four single-family homes, unless we had public utilities.
What about three?
I don't think with the current utilities not being public, we could even meet it with three.
Okay. Okay, I'll defer to our engineer to, to put a comment on that, too. My other comment was the, the issue with the well, one of the residents raised an issue that he's having trouble with as well since the development of the since the development of the property in the rear. And as you stated, you really can't prove, or he can't prove whether it has to do with that property or not, but adding adding this property adjacent to them, and again, in our regulations, our regulations state that we're not to cause any impacts, adverse impacts to adjacent properties. So I guess my question is for you, Brian, and maybe even for Andy, is, you know, what's our obligation to assure that this property or these wells, with the, you know, the two duplexes, don't cause any adverse effect to the adjacent wells? I mean, are we obligated to assure that doesn't happen?
Attorney Gilchrist here. So, Member Manello, you're correct. The standard is, one of the standards for your special use permit review is determine that this proposed use would not adversely affect surrounding properties. That encompasses a lot of issues, one of which was raised was impact on existing wells. Again, I'll defer likewise to Mr. Bonesteal, but I will say that the primary jurisdiction over approvability and compliance for potable water from wells is with the Health Department. And I do believe that review by the Health Department on that issue was relevant for the board's consideration. Those Health Department regulations, to my knowledge, are designed to not only make sure there's adequate yield for the proposed use, but the separation distances are there to consider impact on surrounding properties. So, Member Manello, that information's relevant for you and you should take that into account on whether to approve that. And I'll ask Mr. Bonesteal to add to that.
Thanks, Engineer Bonesteal. I believe that the issue of the wells came up when we were reviewing the subdivision. At that time, there was a different owner in the adjacent property. They had a concern about well yield. They were having issues with their well then, even before we had approved that five-lot subdivision. I do know that the question was posed to the Health Department at that time, and they saw no reason why adding some wells would create that issue with the neighbor. But me, I don't know what the actual issue was, whether it was a capacity issue, whether they had a shallow well, whether, I don't know. The new owner did say that they, when they bought the house, they had a drill and do well. We don't know now whether they still have an issue. I can't tell by the transcript of the neighbors' testimony at the public hearing whether or not they solved their problem. Andy's right. I think we have to defer to the regulatory agency that controls the approval of the individual water supply, and that would be the Health Department. And that goes for the septic systems as well. We really need to defer to the approval agency as far as their opinion, I guess, on what the impact is of adding two wells adjacent to residential properties. As far as any other issues with these lots, I don't really see any. The two duplex units are four bedrooms, about the same size as a four-bedroom house. So there shouldn't be any real difference between what they had proposed when it was a subdivision for residential, single-family than it is right now. Because septic systems are governed by the number of bedrooms, as well as the water supply is based on the ability to provide the flow to supply four-bedroom homes or a four-bedroom duplex.
This is Member Stancliff. Engineer Bonesteal, do you have an opinion about the proposed driveway? I think it was mentioned that the driveway permits were applied for with New York State DOT as residential. Making these duplex units, does that turn into a minor commercial? And in that case, would they need to be widened so that if you have, say, two residents who are opposing each other and they both, one wants to exit, one wants to enter, there's some issue with the driveway? Just not sure.
Here's your Bonesteal. From my experience with DOT, they would still consider this a residential driveway with a residential application. They would not consider this a commercial, which would push it to that next threshold of widening the driveways and increasing the radius of the turning into the driveway from the state highway.
Chairman Oster speaking. Is there any other comments or questions from the board?
This is Member Tarbox. I'm looking at the plans that Pat Polito put up, but they show no decks off the back of the structures. Are those planned or are the people just going to walk out onto the grass? They assume there's a rear entrance.
Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. David, I don't know the answer to that question. There will be there will be exits out the back of each one of those units. I'm assuming it'll kind of be a field fit and there probably will be small decks or maybe just some steps. I'm not really sure at this point the answer to that question. Thank you.
Chairman Oster speaking. I have a couple of quick questions for you, Brian. When they talk about the storage in the basements, full basements, is this going to be a divided basement and have access from each unit?
Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. I think there will be a dividing wall down below so that each one of them has a side. I know there will be like a small utility room. I haven't seen an actual floor plan of the basement, Russ, to know the answer to that question for sure. Thank you.
One of the reasons I'm asking that is because if they have an access from the inside, you have to put in a staircase, obviously, and those units already have a small footprint. I'm thinking, you know, would they would they possibly be accessed from the outside?
There was in the floor plan drawing, it showed some stairs going down. Russ, I'm trying to find that drawing here. Just inside the foyer there, where the door to each unit was, it shows stairwells going down, stairwell going down in. I don't know if Pat can bring up that drawing that I submitted. So, Russ, I guess to answer your question, space has been allotted for a stairwell, and I know that the windows that are proposed in the front of the building are large enough to be to be ingress/egress windows. Chuck wouldn't know the proper term for that, but because of the slope of the land and it's a ranch, to have the back of that first of that ranch floor, kind of even with the ground or up just to meet code, the front will be slightly more exposed and Butch had planned for some ingress/egress windows out of the cellar in that front section. And that will allow some natural light and allow an extra exit. I'm not sure if there was a Bilco door planned or not. Thank you.
Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you. Couple, two final questions I have. Are these the last two parcels of this entire area that Butch owns? And why didn't he go and proceed ahead with single-family units like he has up in Pinewood Avenue?
Brian Holbryter here. Yes, to answer the first part of the question, these are the last two lots he has left with this piece of land. And to answer the second part, we, he tried to find buyers for single-family homes on these lots ever since the two lots were approved, and there just wasn't any interest in having a single-family house right there on New York State Route 2. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you for that. Is there any other questions from the board at this point? This is Chairman Oster speaking. At this point, we are probably at a point where we have to move forward with this project as far as an approval or whatever. And I had spoke with Andy this afternoon, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Andy. He suggests that he put together a written resolution on this. So at this point, I'm going to ask Andy to comment, please.
Yes, Attorney Gilchrist. I think on this application, something for the board to consider, certainly given the extent of public comment, both verbal at the public hearing as well as written comments, and the written responses and the deliberation you've had tonight, is to prepare a resolution that the board can review, is certainly outlining the procedure that's been applied to the application, identifying the record documents, and highlighting the deliberation, the points that you've made tonight. It will, in all likelihood, have discussion at your next board meeting as to what direction ultimately the board would like to take. I'll recall or remind you that the board has the discretion to approve a special use permit, to approve a special use permit with conditions, or to deny a special use permit, but based on the record before it. And the decision must be supported by evidence in that record. That's why I do think it's appropriate for the board to have a proposed resolution for a decision on the application which reviews the procedure and more importantly, reviews the record and the deliberation you've had thus far. And we can further discuss that in terms of the direction that the board wants to take on decision, but I think as a starting point, that's that's appropriate for the board's consideration, and I think it will help focus the board on the issues that were raised and the completeness of the record. What I talked to the chairman earlier about and what I'll state on the record is I do think it's advisable to have that put together, that the board can review that. I'll get that out to the board meeting or board members prior to the next meeting in draft, and that the board can review that and have further discussion and deliberation on the direction you want to take in terms of the decision. You will see also that the proposed resolution that I'll prepare for you will review the standards that are applicable for the board to consider under the special use permit jurisdiction in the Brunswick zoning law. And again, I think that sets the table for your continued deliberation and decision. And I would just recommend that the board consider that approach on this application.
This is Member Stancliff. Attorney Gilchrist, I have a question about ownership of the dwelling units. Is there provisions allowed to condition the ownership?
Attorney Gilchrist, I'm not sure I follow clearly.
For example, could one of the conditions be an owner-occupied duplex or something similar to a townhouse?
Attorney Gilchrist here. What you phrased, if I can use the phrase, kind of opens a kettle of worms, okay? This raises the issue of tenants and who can be allowed? I quite frankly have not seen a condition on a duplex where it was required to be owner-occupied. It it seems to run counter to the concept of the duplex and the rental portion of it. It's not to say that you couldn't. I'm the first to say, if I don't know the answer, I'll tell you that. I've not seen that type of condition before. I'd like the opportunity to look at it and analyze that issue, but admittedly, I've not seen a condition for this type of application for duplex where a condition was one of the units required to be owner-occupied. But I'll certainly review that.
Chairman Oster, any other questions for Andy on that? Chairman Oster speaking. As we just indicated, Andy and I had talked about this, and I'm in favor of, you know, him formulating a draft of a resolution so we can have a look at it and decide which way we want to go on that. Brian, are you okay with that?
Brian Holbryter here. I certainly understand. I don't think my client will, but whatever we got to do to, you know, keep this process moving. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you, Brian. But as far as the board is concerned, this is the way I would like to proceed. I assume that the board is all in favor of that. Is that correct?
In favor of that?
Member Manello, I'm fine with that.
Member Stancliff, I agree.
Member Krieger, I agree.
Member Tarbox agrees.
This is Chairman Oster. Okay, that's the way we're going to proceed. I see a timeline where possibly we'll have a draft by our next meeting. We'll be able to put you on the agenda for our next meeting on July 16. With that being said, is, are you on board with that, Brian?
Brian Holbryter here. Will the board be making a decision that night? I just need to be able to relay this information to my client.
And Attorney Gilchrist here, and understand, Brian, and you can certainly relay to your client. Procedurally, after the close of the public hearing, which occurred at the last meeting, the board does have a full 62 days in which to deliberate and make a decision. I think what the board's endeavoring to do is to review the record, review the response that was submitted at this point, I want to say, three or four days ago, and to continue the deliberation in two weeks, I think with the intent of moving toward a decision on the application, if I read the board correctly. But just be aware that the board does have 62 days after the close of the public hearing, which would get us oh, June, more toward the end of August. I think the board is looking to move this forward and continue the deliberation and move toward a decision as soon as possible. Is that correct, Chairman? I think the board is, is looking to move this forward and continue the deliberation and move toward a decision as soon as possible. Is that correct, Chairman?
Chairman Oster speaking, that is correct. My intention is, is to hopefully move forward at the next meeting and review this resolution and make any amendments or corrections or comments, add additions to it and move forward at our next meeting.
Brian Holbryter here. That's all I can ask and I thank you very much.
Chairman Oster, thank you, Brian. So be prepared to be on our agenda with this project on the 16th. You're already on the agenda with the Gallivan Minor Subdivision. So we will see. Wait a second. You have one other thing. I'm going to conclude our, our business on the Pharaoh project right now, but I'm moving forward. You have a waiver in a Gallivan property, is that correct?
That is, that is correct, Russ.
We currently have that under new business, but there is some old business, but it's kind of old or new business that we have to address. I'd be agreeable to take a look at that waiver right now. And if that's all right with Andy.
Attorney Gilchrist, the procedure is, is within your discretion, Mr. Chairman. I'm just going to note for the record, and I did go over this with the chairman earlier, that I may shortly need to duck out of this meeting to attend another meeting virtually. But I still will be involved in this meeting for as long as I can. And with that, your procedure is yours, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman Oster speaking. The other thing we have under new old business is an update on the David Leon project. And there's something else that he has, a new thing connected with that as a minor subdivision. So I'd like to keep all that together. So I'm going to proceed ahead with this, with this waiver. I'm going to turn the floor over to Brian. And why don't you re-just review that with us right now? It seems like a lot line adjustment.
Member Stancliff speaking. I'll recuse myself on any Gallivan applications.
Chairman Oster speaking, duly noted. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, thank you. Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. This project proposes to annex 0.88 acres of land from Sean's parents' house parcel, which is tax map parcel 72-9-3911. And add that into Michael and Sherry Lewis's lot. Just a little bit of history. We did, we did an annexation to Mike Lewis's lot back in 2014. And after that, we did divide Sean's parents' property on the west side of Deep Kill into two large lots. And that was done in December of 2014. So five and a half years ago. So we're just looking to annex another small chunk, little less than an acre, onto Michael Lewis's existing lot, a lot line adjustment. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. And what you're telling me is that this is within seven years of the first waiver, I would assume. And so you're asking whether this lot line adjustment could be just considered a lot line adjustment and not a full lot allocation under a normal waiver. Is that correct?
Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. Yes, we are not looking for a separate lot. We are looking to subtract 0.88 acres from Sean's lot and add it into Michael's, Michael Lewis's lot. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster. Can we proceed ahead with that, Andy, on this? If it's just a lot line adjustment with no buildable lot, I don't see it as, as an issue.
Attorney Gilchrist, procedurally, I don't see an issue. I just want Mr. Bonesteel to weigh in with, with any thoughts he has. But procedurally, you can. I will note that I do have to exit this meeting now, so I'll go over on this. This would be subject to a secret determination and then if appropriate, the action on, on the waiver.
Thank you, Andy. All right, then I will turn the floor over to Wayne to see if you have any comments on this.
Engineer Bonesteel here. Brian, what is the purpose of moving the lot line?
Brian Holbryter here. The only purpose of moving the lot line is Mr. Lewis wants some additional land. That's it. Thank you.
Engineer Bonesteel, if that, the sole purpose is just to give Michael Lewis some additional property, there's no other, not trying to gain access from anywhere, there's, there's no reason to build a road or build a driveway. I really have no issues with this. There's plenty of separation distance between the new lot line and the Gallivan house. So I have no, no issues with this request.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you, Wayne. Then I see, unless there's any other questions from the board, I think we can.
Chairman Oster, well and septic are all well within the boundaries of the remaining property?
Chairman Oster speaking, if you, I'm, I'm looking at the, the property. You would probably be talking about the Sean Gallivan as well as, as well as indicated way over to the one side. And I would assume that the septic system is, is way over to the other side also. There shouldn't be any issue with the Lewis property. I'm sure you're talking about the Gallivan property.
Yeah, the map I'm looking at, I don't see well or septic on it. But yeah, it's a Gallivan. I just want to make sure that they're not giving Mr. Lewis Gallivan's septic system.
Chairman, there is, there is a well indicated just to the, the southwest corner of the, the house.
And the septic field is the field that's where it says field?
Brian Holbryter, Land Surveyor here. David, the tar, the, the septic system for the house up on the hill there, the old Gallivan homestead, sits out in front of the house. Kind of in front of where we show that walkway. Because that's, that's slightly downhill from the house in that direction.
Okay, I have no problem. I just, that must be where it says field then.
That is correct.
I'm familiar with the properties and this all makes sense.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Thank you, Dave. Is there any other questions? Okay, Chairman Oster speaking, hearing none. We can proceed ahead with a secret determination on this and an approval.
Member Tarbox, I'll make a negative declaration, a motion for a negative declaration.
Okay, this is Chairman Oster speaking. We have a motion for a NADAC. Do we have a, a second on that?
Member Krieger, I'll second that.
We have a second. Chairman Oster speaking, is there any further discussion on this? Okay, is Chuck Golden still there? Can you do a roll call vote off one of the, the lists for me?
This is Chuck from the Building Department, doing a vote for the motion of the acceptance of the waiver. Chairman Oster. Member Henderson.
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Krieger.
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manillo.
Member Manillo, aye.
Member Tarbox. I will note that Member Peterson is absent and Member Stancliff is recusing herself. A vote from Member Tarbox, please.
Member Tarbox, aye.
The motion carries.
This is Chairman Oster. Chuck, that was on the, the seeker determination?
My bad. That is, correct the record for that. I'm sorry about that. That was a secret determination. You are correct.
So on the proposal to approve the waiver, do I have a motion on that?
Member Manillo, I'll make a motion.
And I just heard that it was seconded, this is Chairman Oster, it was seconded by Member Henderson. I don't believe that there is any conditions required on that.
Member Tarbox, they have to submit a map showing the new lot after they deliver it to the county.
Correct. This is Chairman Oster, you're correct. You're correct on that. Okay, with that condition, is there any further discussion? Okay, this is Chairman Oster speaking. Mr. Golden, will you do a roll call vote on the motion to approve the waiver of subdivision?
This is Chuck from the Building Department. The motion for approval of the waiver. Chairman Oster.
Aye.
Member Henderson.
Member Henderson, aye.
Member Krieger.
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manillo.
Member Manillo, aye.
Member Peterson absent, Member Stancliff abstaining, Member Tarbox.
Member Tarbox, aye.
The motion passes.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you for doing that, Chuck. The motion to approve the waiver of subdivision has, has been taken. So you're all set, Brian, on that?
Brian Holbryter here. Thank you very much. Thank you for moving me up on the agenda. Much appreciated. Thank you.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you, and we will see you on the 16th.
Yes, see you on the 16th.
Good night, Brian.
Good night.
Okay, that, that concludes our agenda. It includes, includes some of the new business. We do have several things on the Leon project. Everybody received a very, very large container of materials on the commercial project. And I believe it's called 660 Hoozick Street. Is Jamie Easton here on board to give us an update? This, I was told that there was going to be an update on this.
Good evening, Chairman. Jamie Easton with MJ Engineering. How you doing tonight?
Good, how are you?
Not too bad. It's.
Just for the record, I'm sorry to interrupt, that Member Stancliff has rejoined the meeting. Thank you.
Easy enough, board. Basically, tonight is just a project update. As the chairman alluded, there is a large volume of information that was submitted as part of the project. The biggest thing is, as we were at the ZB hearing for the project, so we need to obtain a couple of area variances for the project, Mr. Gilchrist suggested a joint meeting between the planning board and the town board for this project. And to make the application complete for the, for the, for the planning board, I needed to complete the drawing set and submit all the documentation. So you could be as informed as possible during your conversations with the ZBA in regards to some of the area variances that we are requesting. So tonight was just really more of an introduction to the project in the sense of you have a lot of information, the sense of full construction drawings, the proposed subdivision lines, proposed easements, what's the landscaping going to look like, what the buildings are going to look like, the grading, the drainage, water lines, sewer lines, how all this stuff is going to work together, roadway profiles, stormwater reports, water reports, traffic reports. There's a lot of reports and there's a lot of information there. I, I don't expect you to have digested the probably roughly 2,000 pages of information in the last two weeks. It's certainly a lot. But really, tonight's goal was really to just have you start looking at this and talking to Mr. Gilchrist and start thinking about a way or a time that which the planning board wants to have a joint meeting with the ZBA board for this application. And that's really what tonight was really about. I, I will certainly answer anybody's questions as they looked at the application and they, they, they went through everything. That's great. But at this point, I, I think it's a little premature. I almost want to go back to the ZBA and obtain those area variances so that the plans that you are looking at and hopefully will approve someday, will, those area variances are done beforehand. So that's really where I'm at. I wish, like I said, Mr. Gilchrist was, could have stayed on a little longer because obviously he was at the ZBA hearing. But that's where we're at. So I'll turn it over to the board.
This is Chairman Oster speaking. Thanks, Jamie, for that. There, there is a tremendous amount of material to try and review. I know Engineer Bonesteel is probably, you know, pulling his hair out over that, but there is a couple of questions I do have. I did have a conversation with Andy today. And we were discussing a joint public hearings and so forth and so on. Under this format, that could be possibly improbable to do. And then have a live public hearing, which by the time we, we schedule this, is possible that it, it could be, the governor could allow us to do that. Still though, with social distancing and stuff like that. So there's a lot of logistics that have to be, to be determined, just to do the public hearing at this point. So I think, I think it would be fair to the board and everything to give us a couple of weeks to, to really take a look at some of this material, take a look at some of the plans. I would like tonight, though, just to review the additional thing for the minor subdivision, because we would probably handle these together. Because I believe that the subdivision has to do with actually subdividing the parcels for each of the businesses, if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, you are correct. Some of the, the subdivision, I do expect to occur at the same time. Site plan issuance would occur at the same time. So I do occur, expect those to occur at the same time. The subdivision really is a, there's four proposed lots. One lot is actually for the existing Planet Fitness, the proposed Aldi site and the proposed Wendy's out there. The proposed KFC actually wants to be on its own parcel. So that would be parcel number two. Parcel number three would be really the remaining rear lands that are undeveloped currently. And then parcel number four is part of the applicant's land. He actually owns Hillcrest Road. So we would actually want to give that to the town as part of our subdivision.
This is Chairman Oster. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate that. Does everybody understand that there is a, now a minor subdivision, is it a minor? Yeah, minor subdivision application included in this whole package. The other question I have, Jamie, is that so indicated on the drawings?
Yes. It, it, within the construction drawing set, we show the existing, it's really, there's existing four tax parcels. And then there's a subdivision plan after that that shows the proposed easement on it that we propose to give to the town for egress and utilities along the proposed roadway corridor. We, we do show that. And there's a couple of other private easements, but there is a true subdivision plan showing the lot areas, showing how the setbacks we meet and everything else underneath that. So there is a, a true subdivision plan as part of your construction drawing set. And getting to Chairman, I, I do expect some time to review the, the box of information that we did anticipate. I do anticipate Wayne taking some time to look through everything and give me a comment response letter to start going through that stuff. So I think when we start getting to the public hearing or, you know, maybe at that point, we could have an actual public hearing with everybody together versus Zoom. I think the time will tell. And I think, you know, some of that timeframe is Wayne's review time and, and the, and the planning board's review time of this large application.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you. Now, the, just to, I'm not trying to lengthen this meeting anymore, but I just want to make something clear. The variances that you are applying through, through the zoning, if I'm not mistaken, has to do with some of the parking is being included into like an R9 area? Is that, is that correct?
That is correct. The, there's a small area that we have parking that goes over the, the commercial zone into the R9 zone. It's really approximately about 2,000 square feet. That was the part of the, the area variance or slash use variance that we were seeking for the project. Certainly, there is, and this is where Andy and myself, when we, we talked about it a little bit, was there's ways for me to not need that area variance or, or for regard to that parking. But certainly the planning board, I would still meet the parking requirement globally for the project, but also there'd be less parking on the site. And I know some members of the planning board were concerned about having less parking than, than, than meeting just the minimum parking requirement for the project. So that's how we put that area variance in. And I think that's where Mr. Gilchrist wanted some of the planning board's input into the ZBA action so that they understood that even though I didn't have to do this, you know, this is something that the planning board sees as a benefit versus a, a negative. And maybe you guys can make up your own mind on that, but you guys can weigh in on that decision, so.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you for that. Does, is there any immediate questions from any of the board members or Engineer Bonesteel at this point?
Engineer Bonesteel here. I just got one question. Jamie, the, the actual site plans for each site have not changed, is that correct?
This, say that again, Wayne, sorry.
The layout, the site plan, the infrastructure, none of that has changed since the last time you were in front of the board.
The only thing that has changed from the previous concept plan that the planning board saw was there's a small area of parking now added behind Planet Fitness that we didn't show before, and now provides better circulation around Planet Fitness that we weren't showing before. So that's just the only one change, but otherwise, everything else is the same.
Engineer Bonesteel, thanks, Jamie. That'll make our review a little bit easier.
No problem. I, I expected you to have more than one comment on, on the, in the box, so.
This is Member Stancliff. I had a question about the status of the town board and the paper street situation. I'm not sure where that stands.
This is Jamie Easton with MJ Engineering. I know the applicant attorney, Rob, was speaking to Andy about that and whether it actually had to go to the town board or not. But I have not heard any which way it was going to go. I think that's a, something that needs to be addressed, whether it, we have to go to town board to build a town road within a paper street or not. I think that decision needs to be made, but I think it's something that we need to cross off and, and get. I think that's between the two attorneys and you figure out. And I, I do have that on Rob's agenda to keep following up with Andy about.
Thank you. I have no further questions this time.
This is Chairman Oster. I have one question. At this point, obviously, there's a lot of material to, to review here, and there's got to be a lot of meetings with attorneys and so forth and so on. What is your timeline as far as moving forward with our meetings and planning board? Do you plan on coming before or want to come before our board for an update at our next meeting? Or do you want to move that out to the following meeting?
I, realistically, I think due to the volume of material, I, I think that the next planning board meeting, I, I don't think anybody could do a full review. I think you need to digest it. We're on vacation right now, basically. So I, I'm okay by pushing it out to the August 6th Planning Board meeting. I think that's the, the next planning board meeting. And really, at that point, maybe we have a better decision on which direction we want to go in the sense of a joint planning board meeting to talk about some of these issues. And I think by then, that would really give Wayne about five, six weeks to start drafting comments. Maybe I have a comment response letter at that point, and then he could also inform the planning board that these are some technical issues that are, are of a concern to him, or there's not many technical issues that he can figure out. I, I would at least say we need to go through August 6th or whatever the next planning board meeting, skip this coming up one and go to minimally to the next one. And I think I'll follow up with, you know, Chuck and everybody and see where the board is, you know, next month, you know, or within about four to, three to four weeks and see if I'm warranted to be on the next planning board meeting in August. So.
This is Chairman Oster. That sounds reasonable to me, and I think it would be reasonable to the board. So thank you for that. All right.
No problem.
Okay, if there is no other questions, I think unless you have some questions or more information you want to give us, Jamie, I think we're pretty much done for the evening.
I, I think we're done for the evening, too. Have a good Fourth of July weekend, everybody, and good night.
Chairman Oster speaking, thank you. At this point, I'm just going to review our agenda and then we can entertain a motion to adjourn. I believe the only two items we have in our next meeting at this point is the Galavan Minor Subdivision and the Pharaoh Special Use Permit and Site Plan. Is, is, is that correct by everybody else's notes? I guess that's correct then. Okay.
Do we have Blue Sky Tower back on?
I'm not sure where that is, to be honest with you. I, they, they probably would be considered on there, so I would tentatively put them on there also. I think they're supposed to get us some, like simulation type photos of what that would look from different, that the tower would look like from different locations that they're proposing. So I, I think you're correct on that, Linda.
This is Chuck from the Building Department, and that is correct. They did not have the simulations ready for this meeting, but they expect them to be ready for the next one.
This is Chairman Oster, thank you, Chuck. I think that two hours is a long enough meeting. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Before you adjourn, this is Pat Polito. Andy just texted me and said again to send his regards to you guys finishing up here, and he apologized again that he had to leave the meeting early.
This is Chairman Oster. Well, it was understandable. We had talked about, he has another planning board meeting down in Goshen, I think.
Correct.
At this point, I wish everybody, you know, a happy Fourth of July. I hope everybody has a pleasant weekend. Stay safe, and now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, Lee.
Chairman Oster, do I have a second? That was Member Stancliff. Do I have a second?
Member Manello, I'll second.
There's a second. I have, do I have to do a, a roll call vote on this, Chuck?
Self, sorry about that. To the motion to adjourn, Chairman Oster.
Aye.
Member Henderson.
Aye.
Member Krieger.
Member Krieger, aye.
Member Manello.
Member Manello, aye.
Member Peterson absent. Member Stancliff.
Member Stancliff, aye.
Member Tarbox.
Member Tarbox, aye.
Motion carries. Have a great weekend.
Thank you, everyone. And thank you, Pat, for once again being our moderator, and everybody stay safe.
Take care. You're welcome.